Oh. Looks like we're in the right place.
I'm going to come back to him. Hillary Hedges Rayport. John, did I call you?
No.
John Kitchener?
Yeah.
Nathaniel?
I am here, Dave.
Awesome, thank you.
We got some little technical difficulty.
That's all right. Alternates, Stephen Welch.
Here.
Abby DiMolina? She is. Abby, can you hear us? Howard Matts.
I'm here, sorry.
No, perfect, thank you Abby. Staff members, Leslie Snell.
Here.
William Saad.
Here.
And Catherine and Sarah.
Here.
Great. All right. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda, please.
Second.
Motion made by John, seconded by Joe, my brain isn't working. John.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
Nat?
Hi.
Hillary?
Hi.
And I'm an eye as well, so that's unanimous. Onto public comment for things that aren't otherwise on the agenda with a three minute limit per speaker, please. Welcome Campbell.
Welcome, welcome everyone to almost the middle of July, believe it or not. Stunning. Anyway, I probably had a couple of things. Oh, Campbell said.
Perfect.
I probably had a couple of things. I thought public comment was later, so I'm going to forget what some of them are. But I think the main thing that I initially wanted to address was the use of the new computer program or the whatever you want to call it.
Website.
Yeah.
The website and the subsequent packet. Right? So a couple of problems that I found with the packet. One, it doesn't really fit on my iPad, so I used my computer. It didn't really matter because the format comes in small. And it didn't matter whether I used the magnifying glass or, you know, the magnifier or the open Apple Plus. Things might get bigger, but they didn't get clearer. So the bigger you made it, the less you could read about it. So I apologize for being completely unprepared because there was no way to access the packet. Okay, so my other piece is I generally, as most of you know, I try to make as many of these meetings as I can. And I generally download the packet onto my iBooks and I assume like Google or Microsoft have a similar something. Right? And that way I can read that document, you know, your package anywhere. I could be in the middle of the sound on the ferry and I could still be reading the packet. The way it's set up currently, I would have to send every single page to my iBooks in order to access it. If I try to send the document, I get page one. And I need to be connected to the Wi-Fi at all times, which means that in unsecured areas, let's say I'm at a Starbucks coffee shop or I'm on the ferry or I'm wherever people might be. I know a lot of you travel. I have to be connected to the Wi-Fi and it's not always going to be my own in order to access this packet. I find that problematic. I think that many of you travel and are on vacation here, there, and the other place where Wi-Fi may not be available. And so you have no access to anything. The other thing. Okay, everyone knows how much I hate clicky, 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 clicky to get where I'm going. And this has a lot of that in it, right? Where I have to click, to click, to click. And then I have to wait for everything to download. So just from a consumer's timeframe perspective, I find that also problematic. So I just wanted to share that with you. So that would be my first thing. And then you could go to someone else and maybe I'll think of another public comment. Because I had something positive, I just can't think of it at the moment.
Great, thank you Campbell. I think everyone, there's a little learning curve going on here. And I think there are things that can make it easier and we'll, we'll address them. Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Anybody online? Unfortunately, we're going to move on, but you know how to get ahold of us if it comes to you. Minutes. Oh no, I'm sorry. Public hearing, master plan update, vision statement presented by Dotson and Flinker. Welcome back Dylan.
Thank you. Good to see you all online. So we're here, here tonight for a public hearing on the draft vision statement for the master plan. So I have a brief presentation, which is very, very similar to what I gave back in June at your first meeting on this topic. But wanted to repeat it in case there's anybody in the room tonight who wasn't part of that meeting back in June. So I will share my screen and begin the presentation. Okay. So the project we're talking about in general is the master plan for Nantucket. Master plan is basically a plan that lays out a physical physical, physically based plan and direction for the town. And encompassing topics like land use and the economy and community services. So it's identifying where you want your community to go and then what kinds of trends might impact it in the future and therefore what kinds of actions you might want to take to get to the place you want to be with a set of infrastructure and community facilities that support your population living the best life possible. So there are various phases of this project. The first phase is inventory and assessment of existing condition. That's followed by identifying key planning issues, then creating goals and policies, and finally developing an implementation program to achieve those goals. So that's, that's the action plan with the the things that the town will do over the next 20 or so years to make your goals become reality. And the vision sits between kind of steps two and three there. It's, it's sort of a summary of some of the top level planning issues. And then the beginning of a policy direction for the plan. That's followed up by the goals and the policies of the plan itself. So the vision is a, an important point because it's between the existing conditions and the identification of issues and saying what it is you might want to do about those. I think of a vision as a mental picture of what you want your community to look like in the future. It's aspirational, but hopefully realistic as well. And it sets, as I said before, it sets the policy direction for the plan. So when I say policy, I mean generally what are the kinds of, what are the decisions that the town is making about its future? You know, you, you could go in direction A or you could go in direction B and the policy decision is we're going to go in direction B on this particular topic to achieve what we want. So the vision is based on a lot of public engagement so far. In September and October, Barrett Planning Group had interviews with about 70 stakeholders. In December and January, there's a community service survey with about 1,600 responses. Excuse me, I'm trying to make my Zoom window small so I can actually see my slide. There we go. January and February, there were 11 kitchen conversations. I believe there were about 70 or 80 participants in those. There was a kickoff meeting for visioning in February and then in April, we had a visioning workshops. In May, the Cyrus Pierce Middle School eighth grade civics class did a mini master plan and visioning session. And then on June 9th and 23rd, the planning board reviewed drafts of the vision statement and made edits. So I'm going to review some of that public engagement so far. So the community survey, looking just at responses from residents here, these are people who self-identified as residents, whether year-round, of which there are 834 people, or seasonal, of which there were 593. So when asked what they like most about Nantucket, people said the natural environment. So 67% of people said the natural environment. 61% said its unique location. Then there are sort of a cluster of responses in the 40 to 50% range, so 48% said downtown Nantucket. 47 said coastal resources, 42% talked about parks and open space. And 40% each valued conservation, environmental organizations, or cultural historic preservation organizations. So those are the, the top things that people seem to like most about Nantucket. Those are important because presumably your vision is to kind of maintain the things people value, right? So maintain the natural environment. Maintain those organizations, the parks and open spaces, and the downtown. When asked about concerns, again, these are resident responses only. The top response was too much development at 64%, followed by overall cost of living at 60%. Again, a cluster of responses in the sort of 40 to 50% range with traffic speed and congestion, not enough affordable housing, and environmental concerns like climate change, sea level rise, and declining water quality. And then a range of issues lower, lower priority below that. Still, still important, but I would say just not the, the top issues. The top five areas that the master plan should focus on according to survey responses were growth management and housing affordability tied to 52%. So those two things are sort of two sides of the same coin, right? On the one hand, there's a strong desire to manage growth. And on the other hand, there's a recognized need that for housing that people can afford to live in on Nantucket. Just below that was historic preservation at 50%. Followed by the natural environment, effects of climate change, supporting a resilient local economy. And then a bit of a jump down to responses below 20%. Those, those kind of priorities, I think, were echoed in the visioning workshop we had on April 4th and 5th in your, in your school there. I think we were in the high school cafeteria. So there were about 33 people who attended that in person on April 4th and 12 online. And on the first night, they mapped assets and challenges for the natural systems, built systems and community systems of Nantucket. Made lots of comments on little sticky notes you can see in the upper right of the screen or on the online map for those who were online. And following that, people had one-on-one conversations with each other about top priorities for the future. And then we had a full group discussion that was just really, really fascinating and productive, I think. On April 5th, we had about 28 people in person and six online. And we dug into the vision for Nantucket's future. People rotated again between three stations focused on the natural built-in community systems of Nantucket. And they used the exercise of identifying basically key challenges facing Nantucket. Those are the pink stickies along the top of the paper that you see on your screen there. And then identified the, the ones they thought were really the most important to focus on and sketched out a vision for those, community values related to those, and then assets and resources that the town has to make progress toward their vision for the particular challenge. Following that, participants filled out this Mad Lib form for a vision. And we got just amazing responses. Those are all available online. You can read through what your your community, fellow community members said about the vision for Nantucket. And there's a lot of great stuff there. We use that extensively as well as all the other public engagement records in developing the vision for the master plan. So the key themes that came out of the visioning workshop were housing availability and affordability, coastal resilience and sea level rise, the need for greater integration of the various aspects of the community. And recognizing the value of the diverse community you have on Nantucket. That diversity being economic diversity, diversity of year-round residents and seasonal residents and visitors, diversity of different racial, ethnic backgrounds and different political viewpoints and and perspectives. But overall, a sense that those need to be more integrated. Natural environment and open space protection were highly valued with people raising the question of whether Nantucket has basically achieved its goals and on natural environment and open space protection. And it's time to shift into, is it time to shift into a different mode of sort of focusing on, on management and maintenance of those open spaces and less on future protection and conservation. People talked a lot about government transparency and community engagement. That's related to that topic of community integration and diversity. So making sure that everybody is aware of decisions, that information is distributed effectively and that people can participate in democratic decisions that are made, I guess, efficiently and effectively and really put you on a path towards success. Transportation and infrastructure were important topics that came out of the visioning workshop. How to balance the needs of various modes of transportation, how to make sure that there's enough, that there's adequate infrastructure for the future. And then economic development and diversification came up, so how to have what some people call the real economy, an economy that meets the needs for year-round and seasonal residents on Nantucket for goods and services and provides jobs that enable a person to afford to live on Nantucket and have a decent quality of life. Funding for community priorities was discussed, as well as water quality and resource protection. And then again, related to that economic development and diversification topic. Making sure that essential services are available for the year-round community. And I think that in particular, there was a focus on, on medical care. As well as anything else you might need to support a, a good life. Key values that came out of the visioning workshop were respecting and connecting with other people, maintaining the health and wellbeing of the community and, and safety, helping others, beauty. Both of the natural and built environments came up over and over and over again in those Mad Lib vision statements. Care for the environment, connection to history. Both the history of, of Nantucket, the history of the place, and then also family history was mentioned a lot in the survey. People really value whether they're a multi-generational year-round family or a family of seasonal residents or seasonal visitors who come back year after year and have memories of parents and grandparents and great-grandparents. Possibly behind. And then people in Nantucket seem to have a New England value of, of being frugal and cost-effective. They want their government in particular to be frugal and cost-effective. So there is an interesting balance of, of frugality and also some sense of being willing to embrace innovative and new ideas to solve your unique issues. Self-reliance seems to be a Nantucket value. Democracy and self-rule. Preparing for the future, connection to home and community, and overall just a love of the place, a love of Nantucket. In the eighth grade civics class, the issues and the values were similar. Housing was one of the top issues that the students identify. And some particularly mentioned affordable and affordable year-round housing. They were concerned about environmental concerns like littering and water quality and rising seawater and pollution, flooding and dead wild, dead birds on the beach. They were concerned about the lack of activities for teens and kids and safety overall. And their values were safety, nature, authenticity, freedom, community, success, fairness, wealth, diversity, and trust. And the key resource that they, that the student seemed to point out was what their voice, their voice to speak up, to call for the things they want in the future and to to encourage a community to become what it needs to be to make it a place where children can grow up and can choose to live on Nantucket. So I'm going to share the vision statement that was, that's been developed so far, the draft vision statement. But just again, to kind of go over how we got to this point. So we drafted the vision statement based on a synthesis of public input. We initially drafted five different alternatives that the planning board reviewed on June 9th. And the planning board directed us to combine two of those alternatives together. We did that and those two became another two. Basically the same ideas, but in similar ideas, but in two different formats, one that was narrative and one that was bulleted. The planning board reviewed those on June 23 and again, decided to combine the two versions and made specific edits and suggestions during the meeting that we incorporated and into the, the draft that went out to the public for review. So the draft that is under consideration. The first paragraph is the aspirations for the community. So it's sort of phrase that's what you, what it is you want to accomplish in the future. What you, how you want it to be described in the future. The last sentence describes those community values that are drawn, as I said, from previous public input. And then there's a bulleted list of, of priorities for for future improvements to Nantucket. And as we discussed at the last planning board meeting, those priorities may may have some revision as you develop the goals for the master plan because the the vision is setting this sort of general policy direction for the plan and those priorities are part of that general policy direction. And then the goals are going to be the specific policy directives for the plan. And the actions flow from those goals. So these priorities are, you know, they don't cover every single thing that Nantucket may want or need to do. They're kind of the, the top level, most important priorities to focus on for the coming 20 or so years. I'm going to read the vision statement now. So by 2045, Nantucket will transform our greatest challenges, housing affordability, sea level rise, climate change, traffic congestion, water pollution, balancing growth and preservation, and making our local government effective and inclusive into our greatest successes. As a result, we will maintain a thriving year-round community of diverse residents and visitors who can have a bright future in the context of our beautiful, natural, and historic resources. We will be known as an island that chose the past and the future, an island that preserved what we love and left our island better than we found it. Nantucket will be a place where pristine beaches and open spaces flourish. Essential workers, seasonal employees, and multi-generational families can access housing. Walking, bicycling, using transit, or driving is safe and efficient. Water in our wells, ponds, harbors, and ocean is clean. Necessary goods and services are available on islands. Meaningful jobs and expanded opportunities enable residents to thrive year-round. An efficient local government includes and serves all residents. We are committed to this future because our community values caring for each other, stewarding our irreplaceable natural and historic heritage, and ensuring that the Nantucket we love remains a home for generations to come. To achieve this vision, our priorities are to preserve our coastal ecosystems and manage our exceptional conservation areas to maximize their ecological benefits and beauty. Clean and protect our harbors, ponds, and drinking water supplies. Prepare for sea level rise and climate change. Create housing opportunities that support a diverse year-round population from essential and seasonal workers to families with deep roots in the community. Improve the safety and efficiency of our transportation systems by prioritizing walking, cycling, and public transit and reducing discretionary vehicle trips. Prioritize new development that respects the natural and historic character of the island while providing attainable housing and essential services where they're most needed. Diversify our economy for sustainable growth that allows us to protect our natural and historic resources, maintain our infrastructure, ensure essential goods and services remain available on the island, and expand livable year-round employment opportunities for residences, residents. Welcome and integrate residents and visitors of all backgrounds and income levels. Provide high-quality education and recreational opportunities for youth and ensure older adults can access the services they need. Make our local government more transparent, accessible, and representative of all who call Nantucket home. So that's my presentation about the vision. And I assume the planning board will take it from there.
Great, thank you. Board members, questions? Observations?
Are we going to talk amongst ourselves and then hear from the public?
Yeah.
I have a question for Dylan.
Is your mic?
Hi, thank you. Yes, I do have one question for Dylan. We received a Word document with this information and there were some comments in the Word document where you commented on the phrase, "who can have a bright future in the context of," and you felt it was awkward and you proposed for alternatives. And I just wondered if you wanted us to discuss those because I thought, I, I like, you know, I, I don't think we should have awkward language or language that you feel as, anyone feels as awkward just because we're like exhausted of working on this. You know, we're going to live with it for a long time. So I really liked your suggestions that were in your comment. I don't know if everyone delved through the comments and saw it, but we can discuss it if, if you'd like us to.
That sounds good.
Do you want me to read it?
Sure.
Okay, so your comment was, this is the phrase, "diverse residents and visitors who can have a bright future in the context of our beautiful, natural, and historic resources." And your, your comment is, I think, quote, "who can have a bright future in the context of" is awkward.
Yep.
Am I not able to be here? I'm sorry. The phrase, "who can have a bright future in the context of" is awkward. And you suggested as an alternative, instead of "who can have a bright future in the context of," you had suggested flourish alongside our beautiful, natural, historic resources. Of course, we're using flourish later in the statement, which you noted. B, live meaningful lives in the context of our beautiful, natural, and historic resources. C, live well and enjoy our beautiful, natural, and historic resources. Or D, prosper while preserving our beautiful, natural, and historic resources. So I really liked D and I agreed with you that it was a little awkward, which is, you know, common when you're kind of writing things by group consensus. But I didn't know if anybody else had any thoughts about that.
Anybody else? Howard?
I like the word flourish. Thank you.
Anybody else? I did not see the notes on that.
I didn't either.
No, I didn't either. Yeah.
Can you see the Word document that made any?
Is D prosper?
Yeah, D is prosper.
Prosper.
Yeah.
Yeah. I happen to agree.
Yes. I agree.
I think I have it up on screen now.
Yeah, because I think that touches some other issues that need to be clear in this vision statement too. So that choice of verbs, I think, is particularly appropriate.
Yeah, that was my favorite as well.
Yeah. I'm not surprised.
Abby?
I'm sorry, were you still going?
No. Abby?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I agree. I think the last one was the best. The prosper comment.
Yeah.
Great. So we are all in agreement with, with that being subbed in. Howard?
It's fine, thank you.
Oh, you're good? Were there more comments?
Nope, that was my only comment for now. I just wanted to make sure we didn't miss that.
Great. Any other comments? Howard?
I, I do have a problem with the word diversify. I still have that issue. I might say something like strengthen our economy or something like that. I don't think we're trying to diversify our corp, our economy by bringing new industries and new, a new economy into this island. I think we're trying to just strengthen it and make it work better in the context of.
If you don't focus on diversifying, you're probably not going to have a strong economy. You know, I think that there's a misunderstanding about how this, what this word actually means. Diversify means to, to broaden the, the types of opportunities that are available. It doesn't just mean grow. It's looking at the economic base and what does it offer? You know, and there are real challenges on Nantucket as to what that economic base offers right now. So I actually think diversify is, is the correct, it's to mix it up. That's what it means and that's the problem. It's not just growing.
If I may, in the context of this being in an island and, and what happens on this island versus it being a metropolis or an urban place, that concept of diversification and growth is, is quite different in this context than what you're suggesting might be elsewhere appropriate.
Well, I don't know. We've done a lot of work on Nantucket's master plan and I've been working for the island for 10 years. And I think that diversity is an appropriate term to be getting at what the problem, what the issues are with your local economy. So it has nothing to do with urban areas. It has to do with Nantucket.
Have you some thoughts about what that diversification might be as examples?
I think when we get into the economic development element more in this plan, when we can finally get these documents on the street, I, I think you're going to get more information about that. But I actually don't want to cloud this discussion right now with decisions that still need to be made down the road as to what the master plan is going to recommend. I mean, I think if it's not clear, I don't really know how to help you understand.
Oh, I just wondered, based on your experience and having done this for so many years, what you might have as initial reactions as to what that solution might be to diversify this, this island.
I think it's hard for people to find jobs on Nantucket that actually allow someone to live there year round and support themselves and their family. I, I think that there are, you know, trends afoot in terms of, that are probably going to make it more difficult for people in the future to start a small business who, who are trying to just stay there as a year round resident.
I, I think you're right, but I think there'll be starting small businesses potentially within the context of the way that this island operates and the services specifically needed in order to support the, this, the operations of this island.
I guess we just disagree.
So I'm, I'm, for the planning board member, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, but I'm, I'm curious what it is that you're, the one who was speaking before. I'm curious, what is it about the word diversification that you find off putting or you think is not appropriate for Nantucket?
I, I'm not sure in the context of this island and what happens on this island, that, that diversification or bringing in new industries besides service sorts of industries is appropriate? That would be my contextual statement.
If I can add in, and, and I, I think I see where Howard is. And I think that for me, this, this means is, is exploring opportunities that aren't service based or, or tourist based. And, and I think, am I, am I wrong in saying that? That, that that's what this statement represents is, is broadening, broadening or, or exploring industries that aren't service and, and building based?
It's about the mix of industries. Yes.
Yes. So in that case.
Which doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to bring in, you know, heavy polluting industries.
Right.
No, no, I, I agree. And I'm not sure I even believe it's possible, but I, I think it's important to, to explore the possibilities. And, and I think that in that, in, in that framework, I personally feel diversific, diversifying I think it's the appropriate word in, in that context. I, I understand that it's going to be a tough road, but I think in that context, it seems to make sense.
Well, David, if you do, I do too.
No, that, come on, Howard, that's not what I'm asking. I, I'm just giving you my perspective.
It's not that important issue.
Okay, okay. Yeah, no, I appreciate that. We've got a bunch of hands up though. So I go to Abby first and then Nat.
Yeah. I was actually going to say, Howard, I, I, I see where you're coming from and I guess my question would be, do you think there's a different way you want to word it? And I think the reason, and Howard, correct me if I'm wrong, that sometimes, as you pointed out, some of us who've worked in kind of the financial industry, diversification, as you said, it, it means something else. So we just want to make sure that if we're putting this statement out there, that people aren't interpreting it incorrectly. So the fact that there is some ambiguity is, is kind of what you're saying of why it might be better to just reword it. I just didn't know if you had any thoughts of what might better help get the point across, if you will?
I, I think that someone articulated it, it was Dylan, that the, that the idea was to provide more opportunities for permanent employment that are good paying jobs, that are challenging jobs and, and appropriate for this context. And, and so maybe that's what you want to say is, Abby, is maybe something more along the lines of specifically what you're trying to achieve.
Yeah, and I think, so I think that the narrative version of the vision statement does that when it says meaningful jobs and expanded opportunities enable residents to thrive year round. And necessary goods and services are available online on, on island, not online. So I think that those are the key things that I've heard. I think the question is, can you do that just with the existing economic base you have of predominantly tourism and service based industries with a focus on things related to real estate construction and property management maintenance? Or do you need, do you need something additional to have more money flowing around your community's year round population? And providing some of those necessary goods and services that are, I, I think I'm hearing are slowly lessening? And making it more difficult to live there year round. So diversification in some ways may be trying to actively maintain some of the things that are being lost. If you're like other islands I've worked on, that might be medical care, for example, where there are fewer and fewer doctors to serve the population. Or just everyday goods and services. It may be things like expanding aquaculture. So a return to something that was, you know, an industry more in the past, still exists, but expanding it. So as Judy said, I think there are a lot of things to explore for the future. I think what I've heard really clearly is that the economy is not hunky dory for everybody on Nantucket and that the areas that are difficult are being able to afford to live there for year round working people and that there's a lack of essential goods and services, particularly for older people. Sorry, Nat, you've had your hand up for a while.
It's okay. It's, it's okay. I, 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 I want to rein this in a little, I think we're getting a little off track here as far as like predicting the future. Let's talk about what we were like 30 years ago. Restaurants were closed September. You know, the, the shoulder seasons have been the biggest boom to Nantucket's economy. The summer's always been the summer. All we do is complain in the summer, but actually the summer hasn't really changed all that much as far as how busy it is. But the shoulders would be, you know, starting with the daffodil weekend. And then you have that lull to stroll, right? What restaurants are staying open to stroll is always the big question. Not everybody does. Take this example of what Miyomi Hitoris done over there on Amelia Drive. Okay, that is the kind of thing that takes an awful lot of work to do. The permitting here to, to start a business, you can't, you can't even sell anything but a hot dog at the beach, right? Because you got to have brick and mortar bathrooms and hot water. So it's not easy to get into that, the market that we have today. Okay? So I look at the restaurants because I'm in the restaurants and I've watched them change over the 38 years. And it's amazing chefs never lived here or very few. Now you have chefs that live here year round and either own the business, work in the business, and then do something else in the winter and go back to that restaurant again. Because there's more restaurants, there's more opportunity because they're open longer. Okay? The fast varies. The, the amount of business that's happened because of the ability to get to Nantucket easier than it used to be has changed the island forever. So I, I think the diversity has happened by itself. I'm not against using that word in, in a, in a specific context for the future, but I think we've had a lot of change in the last 30 years that kind of proves what this document is saying for the next 30 years. Because it isn't the same. Dave, you've been here a while. Because Joe is like me, you've been here forever. It's, there's a lot of difference that's happened in the last 30 years. So that's kind of my little thing. I mean, but the, the permitting here, the, it is extremely difficult to have a, a business here, especially if it involves food and, you know, some other difficult hurdles. Oysters is a good one too, by the way. Look at what, what's happened with oysters. It's a huge business. And how did that happen? A collaborative effort between the town and the people that were willing to do it. So that's a good, a good one I didn't think of just until this second.
No, it's, that's a great example.
I, I just wanted to say that's a, a great reason, like that's a great example of why it's helpful to have in the plan that we want different economic activities because then we could actually go and look at, well, why don't we have different types of economic activities? And we could perhaps streamline or, or change some of the permitting in ways that still keep people safe, but make things make sense. And then we can point back to the master plan that says, you know, we want a different, we want, we want a variety, a diversity of economic activities. And I would just remind both the public and everyone on the board, this isn't what we think. This is what we heard from people. And if you go to this summary document that's up on the website and it's been, we've talked about it the past two meetings, point number seven, it says, and this is from the survey, "economic development and diversification. Participants noted an over reliance on real estate and tourism, suggesting the need for more diverse year round economy that provides good paying jobs." And so this, we heard this in the survey, we heard it in the visioning sessions. So I do think we have to, I think anyone reading this vision statement, we would like, it would be appropriate for them to come away saying, okay, we checked the box on tourism and development, now we want to get into some other things and what do we need to do to get there? And also, you know, we're not deciding now what they are. So that's a further conversation.
That's right.
It's about creating an atmosphere that supports it. Okay. Anyone else on the board? Before we go to the public? If anyone in the public would like to make comments on the visiting statement?
Anyway, hello, Campbell Sutton. I just, um, so just to chime in on the diversity thing, because I did do a number of kitchen conversations. And I would say that that was something that people expressed, that they, not only would they like more opportunities, they would like greater diversity in the types of stores that we have where some of our, maybe we could have stores that actually serve people year round, where I might be able to go buy a T-shirt or non shirt, you know? So instead of having to go off island or order things or online or whatever, we could shop more locally. So I just sort of feel like diversity currently has like this bad connotation and people hear it may automatically go, well, we don't want whatever that is. And I think we need to sort of allow that to have greater definition. So I'm, I'm not opposed to it. And a couple of things I would bring up in terms of the diversification. I know that long term, it can be difficult, but I know, I think it was Tom and Tom, didn't they do the drinks? Starting with taking them to different boats and then?
I don't remember.
It wasn't Tom and Tom?
I don't know. I don't, oh, oh, you're talking about, okay, yes, yes. All served. All served, yes.
Okay. Taking it to, you know, having the beverages available by boat, going to different yachts that were in port and selling their, their product. And then they grew to making it so that it was available in local stores. And then it grew large enough to be distributed throughout New England. And now I think it's distributed even further. And that's something that started here on the island. I would say the same thing about the mushroom. And I'm not going to remember their name, but at Moore's End Farm, there was a mushroom farming and the fellow did turkey mushrooms and a variety of mushrooms and sold them locally. And that business grew. And then he moved his production off island and is now in New England. So I think those are also prove some diversity from just aquaculture. Another thing that I have recently come to be aware of is something called Nantucket Spider, which is a spray that, a natural spray that is meant to deter ticks, which is made here on island. And I have found it to be quite effective. So I'm assuming this has an opportunity for growth. So I think this is diversity, what you're seeing there. So I just, I think it's okay to use that term in this context. The other piece that I wanted to sort of, that stuck out to me is in the first sentence, it says, "Nantucket will transform our greatest challenges." And I think that's great. I think it's a huge ask. And so I was thinking something along the lines of will transform our greatest challenges or will transform through diligent planning? Our greatest challenges, going through the challenges, you know, into successes. But I think somehow we have to say how we're going to be doing that. Because transforming what we have in 10 years to what's in here is a really, is big. And I'd like to know how that's going to happen. Like, I think that's okay to put upfront. So those are my comments for the moment.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I think the greatest thing about Nantucket is the boredom in the winter. People create hobbies. I mean, Wendy Hudson, starting Cisco Brewery, starting to brew. You add the pepper mill, you have, but, yeah, the pepper mill, the light person, sadly, the iPad came out or the tablet so they could read, but remember they were on. or the tablet so they could read, but remember, they were on Restless Street. So, yeah, it's just when people are downtime, they start to get creative, they start to work on their hobbies and start to create things. So that's why I think there's going to be, that's the word diversity, I think is the right word. I think anything can come out of Nantucket, and I think that's fantastic. But, yeah.
Great. So it seems like we're on, we're tracking now.
Yeah.
Yes, Leslie?
Oh, it sounds like you're wrapping up. I just wanted to remind everyone that we are accepting public comments through August 4th, for you to discuss at your August meeting on the 11th.
And can they email those to Billy or to?
It'd be great. They send them to Billy.
I also want to acknowledge that we did get a long public comment from Benjamin Brink ahead of the meeting, and I want to thank Mr. Brink for writing such an amazing, you know, I mean, this is really good work, and it shows in a tremendous amount of engagement. It's just hard to know how, like, we've been working on this now, this is our third meeting, and it came out of documents, so it was, you know, led to the people who've been presenting today. So I didn't, I guess it would, I guess I would ask Mr. Brink if there are specific things in the statement that you've written that you really feel strongly are not in what we've written, and you'd like us to incorporate, maybe pull those out so that we can know what they are. Because it's, I don't, otherwise, I'm not sure what to do with this. And I know it took a lot of time, and I want to thank you and encourage further engagement. Don't, please don't be discouraged if we don't rewrite our statement.
Thank you, Hillary. Good point. So I guess, to Judy or to Dylan, what are you looking from us today for?
Of direction on any changes that you think need to be made, but it sounds like you have, so far, I've heard agreements with what's in there on the topic you've discussed, which is economic diversification. So if there are other things that you know, you think should be changed, you should discuss those now.
A small change, and the small change in the note that Hillary spotlighted, too, right? We're going to change that. And I think everyone's in agreement loosely.
Guys know what that is, you should probably state that in this meeting.
I think it's the use of the word prosper.
Yeah.
Yep.
Correct.
Yeah, it was option D.
Yeah. Okay, that's what you're referring to. Yep. Okay. Yeah, and then you have the public hearing open until the next meeting. So at the next meeting, we'd be looking for, you know, specific word level changes, punctuation level changes, anything that you need to make it exactly what you want it to be.
Great.
There's one typo. Sorry. It's in the fifth bullet point down. It says discretionary vehicles trip. Should say discretionary vehicle trip.
Yeah.
Yep, great. Thanks.
And I just want to say, I love the vision statement. I'm really proud of it, and I hope people who just want to write in and say, "Great job on the vision statement," will do so, if you feel that way. And I heard from, I heard from a few people with some questions about the process, and the process, it's, all of the foundational documents are up on the website. You know, I think there's some gaps in the foundational documents that we discussed in the past. I think we were, had the Hispanic and Latino community is definitely underrepresented, and we wanted to do another survey in, you know, trying to reach out to them, but I guess that didn't happen. So this would be a great time to get more feedback from that community in writing during the public comment period. The people are a little older, but then we had outreach to the middle school, so, and I think we've been conscious of that. And I hope people spend some time, if you do want to submit a comment, and I hope you will, that you'll spend some time looking at the community documents, because this is, it's not what we think, it's what we heard.
Thank you. Leslie, did you hear some that?
Dave, I just had a quick comment.
Yes, Abby?
Sorry. Just, I thought Hillary brought up a good point. I'm actually, the Chamber of Commerce is, we just formed a work group to reach out to the Latin American community, and we're actually meeting tomorrow. So I'll make sure to bring this up to them and let them know that the comment period is open till the 4th, so that way, there might be a way for us to get some sort of outreach out before the public comment period ends, because we're already kind of working on reaching out to the community. So just wanted to give you guys a heads up.
Great. Thank you very much.
Conversation I've been having, like, can you wait till summer season's over? Everyone's crushed right now.
Yeah, unfortunately.
They want to be involved.
Yeah. Okay, so we're going to move on to the minutes from here. Minutes for June 9th and June 23rd. Did all the board members have an opportunity to review those? Any comments, issues?
I had one comment I gave to Catherine.
Yeah, I need those changes.
Oh, oh, great, okay.
Just.
Oh, good. Oh, good.
Do a reminder.
Yeah.
Great. So I would entertain a motion on those two minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Hillary, seconded by Joe. Hillary?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. On to second dwellings, we are going to pull out Reginald Harmon, Irrevocable Trust, and Genevieve Harmon, and we're going to vote on that separately, because we have a member that needs to recuse on that. So we'll be voting on Kevin and Emily Mullins, 11 Plum Street, Klaus Kleinfeld, 13 Hawk Circle. We'll do A&amp;Rs separately, correct? Yes. Okay.
I have a question about one of these. Should I just?
We can pull it out, and which one is it?
It's 11 Plum Street.
Okay. Go right ahead.
Go ahead with my question.
Yes, please.
Yeah. So 11 Plum Street is, they're asking for a second driveway, a second curb cut. So the lot goes from having one driveway, which is what it has now, to having two. And the second driveway will allow a car to access the garage directly, and also creates, I guess, a more unencumbered parking spot for one car. I mean, we, our zoning bylaw says a lot shall have one driveway, and I know we can say you can have two driveways, but we also just got at the NPNEDC a couple weeks ago, a whole, you know, presentation about safety and reducing curb cuts and to reduce vehicle conflicts. I know that this is a really, like, quiet area. It's a dirt road. I mean, we're not worried about cars dipping around, but we don't know what this is going to be like in twenty years. I mean, we're making approvals that are going to last in perpetuity. So I just wondered if anyone else on the board had, was inclined to limit the number of curb cuts, because I don't think it materially, like, I just think that they could have one curb cut. And I just wondered if anybody else wanted to discuss that.
I am not a big fan of two curb cuts in a small lot, personally, so. It's a lot, and it's asking a lot of this lot, and this area.
That's where I was.
Yeah, I'm the same.
Okay, so.
Yeah. Can I say something for a second?
Yes.
Sorry, I don't mean to, to this, all of a sudden hit the button. I didn't look at this, obviously. I'm trying to find this plan on my emails. Look, every, every second curb cut in town.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm going to share the screen.
Can you do that, Billy? Is that okay? I'm not trying to, curb cuts are definitely an individual thing. Each one is a little different, in my opinion. Okay, where are we here? Plum Street, dirt road. I know this place. So we're trying to create one on one end and one on the other? Is that what we're doing?
Have I said again that?
What do we got? One on one end and one on the other? Is that what we're doing, Joe?
Yes.
Okay. Isn't the one that they have now, the, is it the first one or the second one, the existing?
Top of the page.
Okay.
This thing is here, and this is the proposed.
Oh, God. I mean, this is where we get into, like, again, they're all different. I mean, this is in the middle of nowhere. I'm not saying that it's not going to change, but there's certainly not going to be a paved road here, ever. The zoning certainly isn't going to get more dense. It's already dense because of the original lot sizes back before zoning. There's not going to be sewer out here, so whatever they're building is, you know, pretty much it, I'm assuming here, Joe, right? So, I mean, I'm not against the second curb cut, where it is, if they can get more vehicles off the street, although in this particular case, there's no parking on the street anyway, and it's just a pass and repass dirt road. If their original, if their original parking is sufficient for the number of dwellings, which it kind of looks like it is, I mean.
Yep.
I don't know what else to say.
They're required to have four parking spaces, but they're providing five.
And the fifth one is the new one? Or is there five, there's five in the one? I can see that.
And one in the garage.
I agree.
Okay, so all of that stuff up at the top is all accessed from the existing one?
Correct.
Okay.
So the one in the middle would go away.
Well, the one at the bottom is.
The bottom, yeah. I mean, this is more of a, I would call this a convenience curb cut. I mean, we've had a few of these up in Washington Road. I'll never forget one of them, and then the place ended up blowing up and they had it anyway. But it was, there was a pretty big, big argument over adding a curb cut, because they were building, a building at the opposite end of the property, which was like, quite a distance, and they didn't want to walk. But they could have had a driveway running inside the property. So you run into different type of situations, you know, in each of these. So I don't want to set a precedent that we don't want second curb cuts, or we're trying to discourage them, but at the same time, I think we should, you know, and I'm going to plead the fifth here, I haven't been here, so I haven't gone and looked at this, but I'm glad we're looking at it now. I would tend to side with the situation of what they already have is quite a bit of parking.
Yeah.
So, not, just, I'm just saying on this particular application, not saying that for everything. They're all different.
Okay, great. So we're going to, we're going to pull, we're going to vote each of these independently.
Separately, okay.
So we're going to start with the Kevin, we're going to start with the Plum Street, Kevin and Emily Mullins. And we can, we can approve this without the curb cut, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Oh, you mean, oh, okay, never mind. Got it.
All right. So I would entertain a motion that represents that.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve it without the
Second dwelling.
Second curb cut, the existing curb cut suffices.
Only the existing curb cut.
The existing curb cut, and I would emphasize Nat's term, convenience curb cut, and that's why. I mean, we have a mass, we have a plan right now, a transportation plan that calls for reducing second curb cuts, and we have an island-wide plan that calls for reducing cars, which remains, means, you know, making approvals that are consistent with that.
Agreed. I have a second. Okay, motion made by Hillary, seconded by Joe. Hillary?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Okay. Next, we're going to move on to Klaus Kleinfeld, 13 Hawk Circle. Anyone have any questions or issues with that application? I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve is submitted.
Second.
Motion made by Joe, seconded by John. Joe?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Hillary?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. We're going to move on to Reginald Harmon and Genevieve Harmon, 13 Menavee Drive. Joe is recusing from this. Any questions or concerns on this application? I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Nat, seconded by John. Nat?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Hillary?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, so that's unanimous. We're on to the A&amp;Rs. Before we list these off, does any board member have any concerns or questions on any of these applications? Okay, we're going to vote these as a block then. We'll be voting on Ford Dukes Realty LLC, Alexander Stancoff, manager, the Carey Living Trust, Dominic Carey, Kimberly Carey at 406 Dukes Road, Leslie Harlow, Whitress, and Wayne Whitress at 10 Academy Lane, Maurice V. Daniels, Alice J. Daniels, trustees, 9 Evergreen Way, and John P. Mersch, 73 and 75 Fairgrounds Road. To entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve all A&amp;Rs on the agenda.
Okay.
Second.
All right, motion made by John, seconded by Joe. John?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Hillary?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Moving on to preliminary plans, we have Shampoo Landscape Realty Trust, 4 Arrowhead Drive. And that is being represented by?
Thank you, Paul Santos, Nantucket Surveyors, on behalf of the property owner, Shampoo Landscape Realty Trust. The trust itself is the owner of two properties that are zoned in the CMI zoning district. Those are 4 Arrowhead Drive and 140 Old South Road. While the property is not located exactly at the intersection of Old South and Arrowhead Drive, each of the respective properties front on those particular roads. So you have Arrowhead, which runs in an east-west, I'm sorry, Old South runs in an east-west, Arrowhead runs in a north-south. There is a separate owned parcel at the intersection, but the property itself wraps. Again, both of the, they are listed as two separate addresses, two separate residences, map and lot, but they are held by the same entity, Shampoo Realty Trust. So the application before you is a preliminary plan for six lots, five of them being buildable. So Lot 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, with a 20-foot wide right-of-way depicted in this area here. 20-foot wide right-of-way is essentially to gain frontage for each of the lots, for each of the lots themselves. While one of the lots does have frontage on Old South, and the, one lot has frontage on Arrowhead, the interior lots are fronting off of this 20-foot wide subdivision roadway. The total area of the site is 29,629 square feet. Lot is located in a DEP Zone 2, the wellhead protection area, and then, yeah, the Nantucket Public Wellhead, Wellhead Recharge District. Subject's lot does not contain areas regulated by the Nantucket Conservation Commission, and is not mapped under the Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program. Areas of estimated habitat are rare wildlife and priority habitat of rare species. Property's not located in a flood zone. The, all the lots themselves will be serviced by municipal water and sewer, and the lots will be serviced by underground telephone, electric, and cable television. As I had mentioned, the lots are located in the CMI zoning district, which allows, or sets forth, a 5,000-square-foot lot requirement, a minimum frontage of 50 feet, which actually can be 20 feet if it's a commercial use, subject to a planning board special permit. All the lots depicted on this plan meet the 50-foot frontage requirement. Front yard setback is none, side and rear setback is none, and the allowable ground cover is 50%. So essentially, this is a preliminary subdivision plan for commercially residential lots of approximately 5,000 square feet in the area of the airport, where you see lots of similar nature to this. In fact, we're adjacent, this is the development here of C-. Um, in fact, we're adjacent, this is the development here of Coffin's Pit, Spearhead, Arrowhead, or whatever the names here are. A similar setup, and you'd be looking at a similar tenant to those uses. It's, it's an ability to get attractive, smaller, commercial lots, um, for whatever variety of use is allowed in the CMI zoning district. Uh, again, it's commercial property, we are required to file a preliminary plan before development of a definitive plan is proposed to the board, and I'm happy to answer any questions, um, that the board may have.
Thank you, Paul. Board members. Paul, is the intent for, um, the owners to sell these for future development, or do they plan on developing them themselves, housing, commercial? Do we have a sense of what's...
No, I think they're looking at just what is the maximum use for the, the property. It, it's essentially one property now that we all know acts that's completely their landscape facility.
Yeah.
So I would assume that this plan is to analyze the potential sale of lots.
Okay.
That's what the purpose of this would be, to get a sense of, um, the planning board's feeling on it, and then for them to kind of look and see what the best use is, and maybe that this, the, the most attractive use is, you know, that, see that comes in and buys the entire property and continues to use it in the way it's being used now.
Right. Mr. Lowell?
Yep, we're making dirt, that's what this is, and that's what...
There we go.
But it's true, and that's okay. In a case like this, we're making something that we need out of something that happened by itself before Arrowhead Drive was even put in, as far as I remember.
Pretty sure this was done before Arrowhead was done, but I could be wrong. Um, and I do agree with Paul's point about the pit. Wasn't that long ago, that was completely undeveloped land, and the zoning fits, the, the plan, the change in zoning here back before everything was done was the right zoning, and you're kind of seeing that now with a family changing the use from an existing somewhat mixed use already, but not a definitive use, meaning that the land was just developed a little at a time. So it makes sense in this spot, in my opinion.
Great, Nat. Thank you. Um, anyone else on the board? Um, so, um, in the staff report, staff has asked the board to discuss potential roadway improvements extending property boundary of Arrowhead Drive to Old South Road.
So, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, so the idea there would be that, um, some pavement improvements would be made along Arrowhead Drive, it's not in good shape.
Yeah.
Um, other developments in the area have contributed some funds to that...
Yeah.
...uh, in the past, but I think with a definitive plan, coming in with a proposal would be good. Same thing with the frontage along Old South Road, I mean, I understand that's a public way, but we can still work with private property owners to come up with an agreement to make improvements. And then the other thing would be to minimize curb cuts along Arrowhead and Old South.
Yeah.
Yeah. Can I make another comment, Mr. Chairman?
Um, Nat, can you, you hold on one sec?
Okay.
Can you bring the plan back up?
No, I didn't think, Leslie made me think of something.
Nat, hold on one sec.
Yep.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, so when, anybody that's familiar with the property, there's the ability to connect on the property right now from Old South to Arrowhead. There's almost a, while it's not really well-defined, there is a pathway here to go. So what we've done on this particular plan is, in addition to the twenty-foot right-of-way that you see, we've also left a, um, an easement, Billy, if we can go back to the site plan.
Yeah.
We've left a, an easement for passage, so that here, so essentially, we could have this, the, um, road right-of-way here, but you still have the ability to pass through here through this, um, access easement, and then work out, and still have that ability to kind of traverse the site in that general manner.
Excellent.
Presently here, and we do a first cut at this point. Till this point, I think we were talking about limiting, there'd be no future curb cut here, other than the roadway, and then there'd be, this, we would like to maintain this curb cut here, obviously, because we'd like to have that potential for activity between the two roads.
Okay.
Yeah.
Nat?
That's a great point that Paul just made. Rocks need to be able to go through here, and that'd be a lot easier, having that inter, interior, in and out in two different directions. Paul, one of the things, Leslie made me think of something, those wooden curbing pieces on Old South at the end like that, and road improvement, I mean, to get into road improvement conversation at this meeting is, could go on all night, because there's been a lot of, I'll just say, um, lack of, ah, commitment to Arrowhead back in the day, it, it was just, things were just done differently, and the work that was just done on Arrowhead was all privately done, with that concrete stuff that, that Tuscana did, and I think that was a, uh, a group effort. I just don't, I, I don't know how much to ask. I mean, what, what do you, that's a, that's a different question. We certainly can't require you to do more just because this is a new project. You gotta have, be reasonable. I think that cleaning up, turning, the turn into Arrowhead is pretty bad, Paul, and it's, it's awful right there.
Yeah.
And those wooden curbs, I don't know where those ever came from and how that was done, but that's what they did, you know? Maybe there's a little bit of improvement that could be done that you could bring back with the definitive plan that makes sense. I don't think you should be fixing Arrowhead Drive all the way to the new part, because I don't, I don't think that's appropriate, but I think there needs to be some improvement that makes sense for this size and scale and location.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know what, I don't know what anyone else thinks, but I've been, you know, obviously, I'm down here all the time, so I'm very familiar with it. I'm just saying, take a look at it, and you'll see what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I think a site visit would, would probably be helpful for every board member, and again, I think that this, I think this is just to, to, to send up the, send up the warning sign that that's what we're going to be looking for, and we'll discuss it when we get to the definitive plan. I, I think it's that simple. Yes, Hillary?
Um, so what is the board's practice been? I mean, I know we're talking about the shampoos, so I don't need to worry about the trees, however, they might not always own it. Um, and we have some, I'm looking, just looking at the photos, we've got some nice Kwanzaan cherries, I mean, we've got some nice big trees there. Can we locate these on the plan so we know that these trees are there, um, and make sure they stay there, and we don't go back to square one just because it's easier for someone to wipe everything out before they start?
Yeah, all the trees would be shown on the...
Okay.
...definitive plan.
Okay.
And I deal with Dave Shaffu all the time, if I show a plan without trees, we're gonna...
Yeah, no, I know, I know.
He's the first call I make.
Yeah, he might like to color, he might like to add the trees himself.
Yeah, I don't think he wants anyone cutting down his trees.
No, pretty sure that ain't happening.
That would not be good.
Even trees that aren't his, he doesn't want them cut down. So, okay, great.
Um, so, a motion on this, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Joe, seconded by John. Joe?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Hillary?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, so that's unanimous. All right, um, thank you, Paul. Um, okay, we're moving on to Jones Way subdivision, portion of twenty-three Jones Way at...
Sorry, Mr. Chair, we skipped over eleven fifteen.
Oh, did we, hold on, I'm, am I looking, I'm looking at the wrong thing, I apologize. Um, we are moving on to Stephen Langer, trustee, eleven and fifteen Trotz Hill Road.
And I can, I can take care of this, I believe. So the board approved this at the March tenth meeting, and this is just the follow-up step to endorse the plan.
Yeah. Okay. Perfect. Questions from the board?
There's, there's no, this represents...
No change, this is actually condition of the approval to, to bring a plan back before the board for endorsement.
Great. All right, I'd entertain a motion.
Move to endorse.
Second.
Move to approve.
Nope, endorse. Uh, motion, yeah, yeah. Motion made by Hillary, seconded by Joe. Hillary?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, so that was unanimous. Okay, now we're on to the Jones Way subdivision, no, we're not, hold on.
We are.
Yeah, we are, okay.
This, this, Mr. Chair, is also a fairly simple one. When, uh, the board previously released lots one, two, and three, and the applicant's looking for lots eight, nine, and ten, instead of lots one, two, and three.
Okay.
So those will be released later, Billy?
Yeah, one, two, and three, the board would retain, and we would release eight, nine, and ten instead.
Okay, got it.
Everyone, everyone good here?
Yeah.
Questions, concerns? Can I entertain a motion, please?
Go ahead, Nat.
Uh, make a motion to approve the request by the applicant to release eight, nine, and ten instead of one, two, and three.
Second.
Great. Motion made by Nat, seconded by Joe. Nat?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Hillary?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. So that's unanimous. Um, another Form J, we have endzone subdivision, Oliver's Way, fifty Brunel Street.
We have Arthur here.
Welcome, Arthur, good to see you in person.
Very good to be here, glad to see you all. Uh, this is another similar situation where you have the, um, subdivision documents, we've already endorsed the plans on this, the subdivision documents, which we submitted, been reviewed by the staff, uh, and, uh, we're asking that they be endorsed by the board, and also that the, uh, lots be released, uh, from the covenant. Covenant goes on one minute and then released the next because we're posting security, uh, which has already been delivered to the, to the, uh, to the office.
Yep.
Uh, and, uh, I believe that covers it. Obviously happy to answer any questions you have, and I'm sure Billy can comment if there are any other points.
Okay, great, so we're, we're, we're doing a, a deposit amount in, in lieu of the Form J.
Yeah, Form and surety, and we've already received the check.
Yep, great. Any board members have questions? Joe is recused, just to have that on the record. That's good. Okay, I'd entertain a motion.
Um, a motion to, uh, recommend endorsement of the legal documents in Form Js, uh, which we have in the office.
Great.
Second.
All right, motion made by John, seconded by Nat. John?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
Hillary?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Arthur. Okay, um, we are on to forty-one West Maya Comet Road, forty-one West Maya Comet, um, would you like to, oh, why don't you go first, Billy? You wanna...
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure. So, um, the applicant did receive a special, an MMD special permit when the planning board was still, uh, in charge of granting those, and, um, they have submitted an ASBIL for, uh, to close out the building permits. In there, there is a little bit of discrepancy as to what the final plan was supposed to look like, and, um, there's a, the driveway itself was not alt, altered, but the parking area within the driveway was altered, and then also, there's a, there's a fire pit that's listed on the plan, and I did go back through everything. The fire pit was included on all plans all along, but it was never called out in any of the, uh, sort of addendums that were included with the, with the, the application. So for staff, we're, we're looking for, you know, as to whether or not this would be acceptable in its current form, or if, if there are any, any amendments needed to the approval.
Okay. Do you mind putting the ASBIL up on the screen?
Sure.
Welcome, sir.
Good evening, Dan Malloy for the applicant. Steve Cohen was going to be here, but he couldn't make it tonight, so I'll, I'll represent this as best I can from memory as to what was going on. So, pretty much everything Billy just said, I did go back and listen to the last meeting where this project was closed out and voted on, and I, I think, having listened to that and then reading the decision, it obviously was very clear, so the, the plan that was before the board at the time you were considering had a meandering driveway that was changing and required alteration vegetation, and the board clearly at the meeting denied that change because they didn't want any new alteration vegetation because it wasn't necessary. There was never a specific discussion of the driveway parking area, and the parking area where it was constructed is in an area that was already altered, it was all lawn. So no new vegetation was altered with the parking area the way it sits today, and all of the vegetation that was supposed to be planted, the revegetation, the enhancements has all been done. The square footages of the plantings do match up to what was proposed to be done. So there is, the planting is in place that was required to be there, the parking area does not match, oh, let me back up. So before I say doesn't match, as part of the process, this plan was supposed to be provided to the board prior to construction. That didn't happen. So this discrepancy may have been caught a while ago, had that plan been provided. So what we're looking at now, everything is done, everything's planted, everything, everything is in place, with the changes being the parking area itself is different. The driveway throat has not changed, it's all been revegetated on the sides, but the parking area has changed. Where the parking area used to be was straight, it just drove straight in to where the shed is proposed right now, is where the parking area used to be. So everything to the right of the parking area, you can see in that lighter green color, has all been revegetated, that was lawn previously. So everything has been put back or revegetated as it was intended to be, but the parking area is in a different place than what the board, maybe to a degree what the board saw. It was shown on plans in this regard.
Well, that dash line is probably where it was before.
That's where it was, so the plans that the board reviewed showed this revised parking area, but nobody ever talked about the parking area, we always talked about the driveway itself because it curved and cut vegetation, but nobody ever talked about the parking. So the board at the time denied, excuse me, denied the pool, and they denied the re-altered driveway because of the vegetation alteration. So there was no new alteration because the driveway parking area is in what used to be lawn. And then in terms of the fire pit, that was always on the plans. I didn't go back and listen to every one of the meetings, but the one I did listen to, there was definitely no discussion of the fire pit, but it has always been there. Um, so that's a question as to whether or not that's something that's relevant to get into, or if we're talking about the fact that parking is different, but didn't result in any new alteration.
Board members?
Yeah, I just remember I was worried about the massing and the existing footprint.
And the pool and everything else, yeah.
There was a lot of conversation, Emily was part of that as well, the lighting, et cetera, I think we had another one about a half mile away, same problem, but, um, yeah, I think that, uh, the fire pit got lost in the larger, more automatic situations, but I, I liked that they were able to keep the driveway in the existing place and, and slide it more closer to the house, which I think is better, and not really disrupt that natural vegetation, or, or go close to the lot line in the back, and that's no pool, I think this has been really a win for us in a lot of ways, so, I don't know what anyone else is feeling, but, yeah, sorry, missed the fire pit.
Yeah.
Nat? I mean, I agree with Joe. I, I, at first I've ever heard of a fire pit being in question about an MMD application, so can somebody enlighten me on that? I'm curious. I mean, there are different kinds of fire pits, I know, Joe, some of them are kind of like, uh, a small, a small structure, but what is up with that? I haven't heard this yet.
No, I think, Nat, the concern was is that, is that, well, obviously, it was an oversight by us, as a board, if it existed on, on the plans, we were focused on the driveway being moved and the pool.
Oh, yeah, and the pool.
And I think, unfortunately, this sailed by us, so, um, I, I don't think we can point fingers here, uh, we have to accept some, some blame ourselves, uh...
Yeah, but it is, but it is what we...
I'm thankful that it's in an undisturbed area and that they didn't mow down more...
Right.
More vegetation to create it, um, but I, I think... But I, I think that we need to shoulder some blame on this as, as well.
Is it flush with grade, or is it like 18 inches tall? Did you say that?
What?
Is it flush with grade, or 18 inches, like an elevated one?
It's elevated. I, I don't know how it's tall.
Roughly, yeah, they come about 18 inches. Yeah.
Yeah. Didn't they revegetate out there, Dave, or Dan through the chair? Didn't they revegetate some area as well on this project?
Yes, yes.
Like 75?
I think it's up.
Almost 7,500 feet of revegetation.
Yeah, isn't it this section here?
Yeah, it's like 7,500 square feet.
So, yeah, everything that he's pointing to on the right side was, was revegetated. The sides of the driveway were revegetated. There's areas around the entire perimeter that were also revegetated and filled in.
Yeah, and that note, it says 7,500, 600.
Yeah, that's what was, was revegetated around the entire property.
That's a lot. That is a lot.
Okay, well, that's good. I remember something about that, so.
This is, this is not a public hearing.
I know, it's not a public hearing, but I, I, I'm gonna let Ms. Molden speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to comment. Emily Molden for the Nantucket Land and Water Council. As was mentioned, I did participate quite extensively in this particular hearing. I think the main question that I really had about this matter, I think Mr. Malloy may have addressed, and it was really whether or not the changes that have taken place, that are in question, changed the overall amount of new vegetation that was disturbed and/or revegetation that was allowed, and then also whether in any way it would change the overall sort of massing and impervious surface calculation. And if that can be confirmed sort of through the board and staff, that, that there has been no change there, then maybe that, you know, the board can approve that. If there was a change, I was gonna suggest maybe an amendment should be required, just to sort of set an example for those types of changes that come before you in the future, to formalize it. But if not, then maybe, maybe that's not an issue. But that was gonna be my primary concern, to ensure that those things remain the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me address that.
Yeah, so there, there was no new vegetation, no new alteration was, was performed. Everything was infilled. So the house itself was picked up, new foundation, the house was put back. The house is as it was proposed to be, the decks, all the landscaping is essentially as it was supposed to be. The planting, the square footages meet or exceed what was supposed to be put in. So everything on the ground meets the criteria, with the exception of the, the confusion is the way the approval is written, where it says no alterations to the driveway that cause new alteration. And that's where it was flagged by the fact that you never saw this plan, or the staff never saw the plan, and now this driveway parking area is different.
Yeah.
So I think materially, it is different in terms of where it is, but in terms of the approval, it did not change the scope or impact what was approved.
There, there's no more ground cover, there's no more permeable surface than the original application. The disturb, there is no additional disturbed area.
Right. So if the, if the parking area wasn't where it is now, it would be over to the right. The same size, the same configuration, nothing.
Okay.
So square, area-wise, everything is the same.
Great. Board members, any other questions?
I was trying to look quickly. I can't, I don't know if I put the, the site plan in there, but I've looked at this a number of times. I can confirm the driveway matches exactly where it should have been. The prior driveway was sort of somewhat located up alongside of the house on the screen right here. And rather than extend it up this way, they made it wider towards the house. Yeah, that, that's the change.
I, I think it is, yeah, because they, they. Yeah, it's moved closer to the building, away from the undisturbed vegetation, yeah. So what do we need to do here, Billy, to?
We were looking for clarification on whether or not the ASBIL would be okay, as it is, and it, it sounds like it is, so.
I think so.
So condition number one, Billy, confirming it, kind of?
Yeah, I mean, I think the board, I put in here that you need to determine whether or not these elements are acceptable, so I think you could just, I think, make a motion to approve the ASBIL as submitted.
Are you done, Nat?
Yep.
Hillary?
I, I just had a question about the fire pit. So normally, I mean, I understand there were worse, there were like bigger hills to climb with this application, and that was the focus, but what normally has the board to say about fire pits and the MMD? Is this something that's a topic of discussion?
So the MMD is now a ZBA special permit, but within the MMD, it, it comes more, it becomes more about impervious versus pervious surface. The fact that I, you know, we never discussed the fire pit, and yeah, there's probably a, a, like propane line running there, but it was, it is in the, the prior disturbed area. But it was something that, that just going back through the minutes, going back through everything, it was never discussed. So it, it popped out to me on the ASBIL, but then when we went back and looked at the landscaping plans, it was included in there. It just was, it's a very small dot on the plan.
The focus on those, those applications for us previously were really on not expanding undisturbed areas, making and trying to contain the footprint to what it was pre-existing. We really never got in, in all the years I've been on the board, I don't think we've had a discussion about a fire pit.
Okay, thank you. And I'm also looking at the site and see that if there's a disturbed area, right, where the fire pit is right now.
Exactly. All right. So I would entertain a motion to approve the ASBIL.
A motion to approve the ASBIL.
Second.
I'll second it for discussion. I just want to emphasize that. Oh, is that okay?
No, yeah.
Can I discuss on my second?
Yes.
I just, I just think it's so easy for applicants to bring these things to us when there's something that they want to change. And I, I understand why this happened, and I'll support it, but I, I really want people to come back when there's something that's gonna change. Come talk to us.
And we're not, we, the, the MMD now is the pervious, the ZBA, so.
But there will be other opportunities for people to do things that they were, that we didn't expect and didn't see before.
Okay.
This one is a negative. I think we would have a totally different discussion, but I think all the changes have been more beneficial.
Yeah, if they, if they had disturbed more area and expanded the footprint, we would have an issue, but, but they haven't. And, and part of the ownership on this is our oversight as well.
Thank you.
So great. So a motion made by Joe, seconded by Hillary. Joe?
Aye.
Hillary?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll do it again.
Okay, we are on to public hea, oh no, we've got five Marin away.
Just Marin our way.
Oh, it's number five. Just Marin our way, request refund, remaining surety balance.
And it's, so it, I believe it was, I can't off the top of my head, it was in December, we released a majority of the surety deposit at that point, held on to a, to an amount until the trees were installed. The trees have now been installed.
Okay, great. Anyone on the board have questions?
Motion to release the remaining balance, second.
A motion made by Joe, seconded by John. Joe?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Hillary?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Now on to the public hearings. We've got a couple of continuations with different dates, so we'll have to vote them separately. I'd entertain a motion to continue Quia Penn LLC, Old South Road, 111A Old South Road, and a portion of 109 Old South Road, to be continued to August 11th.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
A motion made by Joe, seconded by Nat. Joe?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Hillary?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. The second continu, continuation is Cliffside Beach, Inc., 46 Jefferson Ave., to be continued to September 8th. Entertain a motion?
Motion to continue September 8th, 25.
Second.
Motion made by Joe, seconded by John. Joe?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Hillary?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. That's unanimous. On to J&amp;J Holding LLC, Iraqi Jim, Gibo, we'll just say. Gblatz for Nancy Ann Lane. And that is represented by Paul Santos.
Thank you, Paul Santos with Nantucket Surveyors, on behalf of the property owner and applicant, J&amp;J AKK Holding LLC. This is the actual, the second hearing on this application. We presented this plan to the board at last month's meeting. This is a four-lot subdivision, essentially within the Richmond development area. It is accessed off of Nancy Ann Lane, which is ultimately accessed from Lover's Lane, and provides a connection between Lover's Lane and Gremlin Avenue. Again, four-lot subdivision, three buildable lots and one roadway lot. It is located in the CN zoning district, which requires 7,500 square foot lots, 50 feet of frontage, 10-foot front yard, 5-foot side, and a 10-foot rear yard with allowable ground cover of 40%. We had a brief discussion on the intended use of these lots. This would be mixed-use development, commercial, and residential, with the intent hopefully to have the residential be available to the commercial entity to provide employee housing on the particular lots. The questions raised at the time were regard to landscape, which was to include adding some street trees on the particular property. The discussion regarding sidewalks, discussion of a paved walkway, or some type of access between Nancy Ann and the retail facilities that are located on Old South Road. Fire review, and then acquiescence that we would be providing a full response to the initial review by your consulting engineer, Ed Pesci. So the plan that you have in front of you essentially highlights all of the items that were brought up at the last meeting. Again, we have a paved roadway in a T-intersection. You have in your packet correspondence from the Nantucket Fire Department with regard to agreement that the fire apparatus can access and exit the property by coming in and turning around. That path would be into this area, back out of here, and then move back out freely. That is in the packet. We've added a sidewalk connection, which starts down on Nancy Ann Lane with a concrete handicap ramp at this area, a patoomis paved walkway that comes up and extends to the end of the proposed roadway. We have put the street Ts along that path, one tree, street tree here, one here, and one here, to accent the, the sidewalk and provide some type of landscape within that, within that area. We have placed a note on the plan with regard to access, and which is depicted in this particular area over here, which states that, I have it shown on this plan, is a 5-foot wide pedestrian easement, location to be determined at time of Lot 1 development. Not knowing exactly what's happening on Lot 1, we just wanted some flexibility on the fact that this may move in this particular area. It may sweep in this particular area. We just don't know until we develop where the buildings and the parking are gonna go before we fully define that particular component of the, the application. And a, the complete responses and revised plans have all been submitted to your consulting engineer, Ed Pesci. So this, we felt, addressed everything that was brought up at the last meeting. Again, landscape, street trees, sidewalk, paved walkways, fire department review, and then acknowledgement with regard to dealing with Ed Pesci. To go back to the pedestrian easement, and I'll go to your, the staff's report and recommend, recommended conditions on the application. One, item six, is that a 10-foot wide pedestrian easement paved to 6 feet wide shall be installed and permanently maintained on Lot 1, including any applicable legal documents connecting the roadway to what is now known as 12 Nancy Ann Lane, prior to the release of the final lot. So that widens out and further defines what we had shown on this plan. I have no issue with that particular comment. I just would ask that we could at least put the caveat in here that the location of that is to be determined at the time of Lot 1 development. If the board feels that it can be determined at that time, and then comes back to the board for review as a minor modification, or some type of non-publicary or any type of item, obviously we have no problem in doing that. Or if you feel like you can leave that location to staff, as long as it happens. Again, we're happy to do whatever you may do. We would just ask that that condition be further specified to give me some flexibility with regard to how we develop Lot 1 when we move to that stage. We have no issues with any of the other staff recommendations, although item five, I didn't see any issue with it, but then reading it again tonight, I may have misinterpreted what that's actually saying. It says the applicant agrees to pave Nancy Ann Lane from Lover's Lane to Gremlin Avenue at the applicant's expense prior to the final, prior to final lot release. Now, I didn't think anything of it, because the road's already paved, but are we talking about, is that a binder course? And you're looking for this applicant to put the finished coat? Or is that something that was maybe grabbed from another application?
I think the intention was to make repairs. It's in pretty poor condition. But repairs with pavement, not repairs with filling in potholes with gravel.
Again, so I would, is the Nancy Ann Lane part of another application to the Richmond development? That that's some requirement that should be borne on the developer of that road, or what am I missing?
So this portion of Nancy Ann Lane, it was not part of any of the Richmond development projects. This is actually part of an old subdivision from probably the early 90s, late 80s.
So, again, Leslie, you just had said, so repairs to Nancy Ann, or are you looking for a full paving of that particular roadway?
Repairs.
Okay. And would it be from Lover's, could it be from Lover's Lane to our intersection? Or what would the need be for us to go all the way down to Gremlin?
Billy, can you pull up an aerial?
Yeah.
Can you zoom out just a little bit more? Yeah, that's true.
Do you know what this means?
Here to here.
The intersection with Lover's and the intersection with Gremlin.
So if we could maybe, if the, the repair component of that request would be, rather than a strict, you're gonna pave that entire roadway from one end to the other? I mean, I don't think we'd have an issue with, with that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, it's repair, it's not replace.
Yes, that's, that's right, yeah.
And I see you're good with that?
Yes.
Yes.
And I will, before, to be back to the board, I will say, I know, we, we talked a lot about interconnectivity in this entire area. That was the purpose of the pedestrian path here, because we have the state forest. We have the state forest and everything that's happening there. I know staff, staff has been having an open dialogue with Richmond. I know my client has been having an open dialogue with Richmond also and it seems to be, everyone seems to be at least working together and talking about the best way to handle connecting and coming up with a plan here for the development of this particular area.
Yes.
Well, that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Great. Board members, we're all good before I go to the public on this?
I have some questions. I wondered if you could tell me more about the retaining wall and the grading and what that's going to look like as far as the drive?
Yeah, okay, if we could bring that plan back up. Where our hope there is to try to grade this in a way that we don't need the retaining wall.
Okay.
Is to just work the grade with regard to the Shepley, the property at Shepley. And again, my client has had open discussions with the owner of that property also. So it's a low, we're talking about is this area, this particular, is trying to match the grade as best we can between the Shepley property and what we have coming in here. In the, within the reply back to, and then that's where we show a proposed retaining wall here, in the reply, our response back to Ed Pesci, we specifically referenced the fact that we were trying to eliminate, the attempt would be to eliminate that wall. If we need to do anything in that area, it would be a block wall, so we'd have no impact on the, on the Shepley property without a need for maintenance on that property. So comfortable or confident that we can grade this roadway here without necessarily having to go onto that, or having a need to go on or ask permission to go onto that property?
So can we look at the cross-section? I think you put a cross-section in here.
Yeah, that would be on the last section of the subdivision.
I think we just passed it, yeah, yeah, there it is, yeah. So it's a three-foot grade?
No, we're not at the wall, the wall is not there, we're not, none of those details show the wall. It's just right here, we need to pull that up right there. That's it. Right here. So again, this would, this would be, if anything, it would be a block, it wouldn't be a custom-in-place concrete wall. It would be essentially a block, block wall that would be, would not be, you'd never see, you wouldn't see this, it would be, it would be hidden, you know, on the side of the roadway. But again, our attempt here through our last response to Ed Pesci is to completely eliminate that and just work the grade we can until we have no, no need for the wall.
And it's just a two-foot wall if you need it?
Yeah, I mean, I can't, my eyes, I can't read what that was, but it was a wall, it was a wall.
Yes, okay.
It was essentially a block, it was like a series of blocks.
It's to, it's to deal with the grade that you have, that's already there.
Yeah, but we're trying to regrade. So picture this, so the Shepley property is here, the road is here.
Yeah.
We can't chase the grade onto Shepley, so we're basically creating a barrier in which the road would go up against that area there, so.
Right, but you're hoping to have enough run to kind of?
If you have to manipulate the road grade, that's what I've asked my engineers to do is just make this thing work without having to, number one, it's a cost savings for the client and also it's just a.
Yeah, because I was looking at this, like it's a 1 percent change and then at the, it looks like at the edge of the road, it's a four and a half percent change. So I just wondered, are we going to have a road that's like a normal 1 percent, you know, crown?
Yeah, the road would be completely, would be completely levelled. It would happen on the shoulder of the wall.
So then you'd have a shoulder that dips down a lot?
Well, the wall eliminates the need for a graded slope. We can work around, like I said, we'll see what Ed Pesci's response is, but we're trying to work around that.
Thank you. So we'll see that again when you come back.
That'll be in, part of your conditions that all comments from the Towns Consulting Engineer, Pesci Engineering Associates shall be addressed prior to the issuance of building permits. So that would all be addressed.
But to be clear, if we approve that, it will be addressed by staff. So unless you're not comfortable.
No, I just, it's hard for me to really visualize it, but I see a lot of crazy things happening with grade, with grading on this island and they end up, you know, not serving people well, except for the people on the property. So we're creating, you know, that's my only concern.
This one here, Hillary, the only, obviously, the one that we're affecting is Shepley. So what we're trying to do with there is we can't put water onto Shepley, everything's got to stay within the roadway. So it's really an attempt to keep, you know, the harmony between us and where the Shepley project is. And they've got a complete, full, you know, fence in that particular area. And that's right on the property line.
In this, in this site, you know, in this location, I think as long as the staff are looking at it, it sounds like they are, it will be addressed appropriately.
And it's a low, it's a low profile. So once you get into, with regard to retaining walls, any wall, if you go to the zoning code, any wall that's over four feet in height is essentially considered a structure. So it would have to meet the zoning setbacks. And then any wall that's over four feet in height has to be engineered by a professional engineer. Any wall less than could be a landscaper or it could be, you know, we can show that on the plan, but the four-foot is the kind of the threshold on, you know, is it a structure? Is it not a structure? Does it have to be engineered by a professional engineer or does it not have to be engineered?
Thank you.
And it doesn't, like going across that driveway is, is pretty gradual. It's more towards the end of Lot Line 2 and 3 that that grade really dramatically slopes off, so I can't imagine, I mean, I could see it getting shorter if not eliminated. So I think you're showing us a worst-case scenario.
Thank you.
Great, so I'm going to go to the public. Is there anybody online or in the room that would like to speak to this application? Welcome back.
Hi again, Campbell Sutton. I just had a question if I could take a look at the aerial view again? Because it seems like there's going to be a lot going on in that area and it sounded like this proposal is responsible for repairing the pavement from Lover's Lane to the left, correct? That's Shepley and that's Lover's Lane, right? And this goes all the way through to what sort of looks like a four-way intersection to a degree, correct? That's what they would be responsible for?
To their driveway entrance, I believe, which is, aligns with Greglin, doesn't it, or?
It's, God, right, it's right here, Greglin is here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so what I was wondering sort of, I'm just sort of wondering why it goes past their property line, like I could see it up to their property line because that's a fairly large stretch that Shepley has in front of it, that it's doing the repairs. On the other hand, I can see why you want sort of consistent repairs down the entire way. Then I was just sort of wondering, is there a plan for, to hold the neighboring, to the right, the neighboring property to some form of equal level of repair?
When they develop, there will be.
Okay, I'm just sort of wondering.
Until, until an application comes before us, we're kind of helpless, but yeah, if an application comes in, they'll be held to the same.
Okay, I just wanted to check because it did seem like they had to go a bit past their own space there.
Like Paul said, they're all talking and then we've got Mike Burns and.
Yeah, I got that, I just wanted to check in. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone online?
No, no hands are online.
Okay, no one in the room? I'd entertain a motion.
Most to close the public comment.
Second.
All right, motion made by Joe, seconded by Hillary, Joe.
Hi, sorry.
Joe. Hillary.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Nat.
Aye.
And I'm an a as well. As for the merits.
I have some things that I want to say about some elements here. The easement, I really appreciate you putting it in about your flexibility about making it wider. I think the reason, I just don't want to lose, and I, and I know you want flexibility so you can plan what you want to build, which makes sense. I don't want to lose sight of why we have it, which is so that, I mean, the reason why I think it's important is that we've got a transit station not far away and we have this idea that, you know, folks working here or living here will want to go back and forth to that transit station on Old South Road and Goldfinch without having to go, you know, we want them to be able to go between the buildings. So I just, with the way you have it shown here, it goes into land that someone else is going to have to do something to make that connection. And I know that your intention is to make that connection, so I would just like it preserved in our discussion here when you come back for the final approval, that what we're looking for is not a path that ends, no, you know, it's got to connect to another easement.
Well, it's got, it's going, the intent is to connect to that access easement that's already there.
Yeah.
You know, there would be a connection. I mean, and again, that's why we still, we're still going to need, you know, acknowledgement from Richmond to do that. So that's what the intent is, is not, yeah, not to end it and just have.
Right, well, I mean, you could do it if you had instead of shown it going right onto the Richmond land, you could have it curving around to where that access easement of your property.
Yeah, I'm fully aware of what we want, what we're trying to do.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, Hillary, years ago, I mean, the Cumberland Farms property, I developed the Cumberland Farms property and that path that comes off, that cul-de-sac, I mean, that gets a lot of foot traffic.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that for the record. I also wondered, I love the trees, could we get one more tree? At, at the corner of Lot 1 and at the, where it turns the corner?
The trees are based on the subdivision regulations requirement for the trees, but happy to put another tree on, it's fine.
Okay, I don't want to over-ask, I just like the idea of another tree.
No, it's, I think it's, I forget what the, Leslie, remember what the requirement is for tree, it's one for.
It's one for a lot.
It's one for a lot, so that's why we had, I put the, I left kept the three there only because I wanted to keep the path to have a little character to the.
I see, okay. Well, it's up to you, I just thought it'd be nice to have a tree.
I don't see if you want a tree up there. We can put another tree up there.
It'll, I think it will enhance your property.
Actually, I think that was, you requested a, oh, I just didn't mention that, but there was a request for a screening between this.
Yeah. So that, I also had a question about the Privet. And I, I wanted to take advantage of the Land and Water Council folks in the room who have a list of recommended plantings. Do you, I mean, I'm assuming that your client, the request is for screening and that you're somewhat agnostic about what the screening is? Do you have any recommendations for the board about Privet versus other things?
If I could before, let's remember where we are up here, too. We're in a very heavy industrial, you know, commercial area.
Right, which is actually why I'm, why I'm bringing up the Privet.
You know, or whether you feel it's better to have a fence, quite honestly.
Yeah, that's also a fair point.
Thank you, Emily Molden for the Nantucket Land and Water Council. There definitely is a list, we have one on our website and a brochure that lists all the native plants and shrubs and there are a variety of native species that folks have used as hedges. And I mean, I would be happy to provide those in general if the board is interested or if the applicant is interested with some suggestions, some options.
I bring it up at your discretion. Privet takes a lot of maintenance, you've got to clip it or it looks terrible and you might actually find some other options that are preferable, that won't need to be clipped all the time and aren't, you know, a non-native species.
And then the street trees are, there are a list of street trees within the subdivision control regulations that are preferred, so.
Those are all my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Hillary. Board members, back to the merits. Entertain a motion.
A motion to approve the requests as proposed with staff findings and conditions, perhaps including a rewrite of condition number five around paving.
To be more specific, to.
Repair.
To repair as opposed to replace, okay. Anything else? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made by John, seconded by Nat. John.
Aye.
Nat.
Aye.
Hillary.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
And I'm an a as well. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, everyone. In fact, Hillary, to your point, I think I still owe you a tree for Cumberland Farms, don't I?
You do still owe me a tree at Cumberland Farms, actually, I have not forgotten.
So Hillary, I would follow up with him, is what I'm hearing.
Yeah, it's, it's only been 15 years, I'm still waiting.
We are on to Nantucket Safe Harbor for Animals, 25 Airport Road, and that is represented by?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, for the applicant attorney, John Brusher, representing Nantucket Safe Harbor for Animals Incorporated. What we have before you this evening is a modification to the, or an amendment to the major commercial development permit that was issued a few months ago. Really, the only change is that in this, going through their programming and their design, they realized that they needed a larger building and so they are increasing the square footage from 5,747 square feet for the last MCD to 7,079 square feet. The uses are the same, everything else is the same as in the previous decisions and we are absolutely fine with the conditions that are listed in the staff report and we'll be happy to consult with Mr. Pesci about any, any questions moving forward about test bits. I think that's all.
Thank you, John. Board members.
Nothing.
Nothing. So this doesn't really, we still have 48 percent open space on this lot, correct?
Yes, that's right.
And Mr. Chair, just a clarification point.
Yeah.
Condition two was a little bit of a belt and suspenders approach on my end. That was, it was listed in, it was listed in Bracken's response to Ed Pesci's review and even though we already have the condition of to comply with all.
Stormwater, right?
Well, to comply with all recommendations of the town engineer, I just, I felt it was good to point that out because it was clearly listed in there that he felt it was a condition.
Okay, great. Nat?
No, no, I'm good. I just, I just want condition three to be understood with anyone that doesn't remember this, so they're building less than they could and it's, needs to be, just make sure we all know that.
Yeah.
Just don't like the amnesia to set in, so I wanted to get that out.
That amnesia comes five years later, Nat.
That's true, but you never know.
Yeah. Emily.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Emily Molden for the Nantucket Land and Water Council. The only question for clarification I had was whether the towns engineer, Ed Pesci's review for stormwater management incorporated the larger structure or if that's something that he could just be consulted on again beforehand since that does increase impervious surfaces as far as the stormwater management goes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sure, I'm not sure, but we're certainly happy to consult with Mr. Pesci.
If you could, I think that, I think it would be wise to have him review and make sure that, that it still meets the standard that you're building for. Yes, please, and you can just let staff, we'll have staff review that. Anybody else in the public? Anyone up?
No hands are online.
I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing. All right, I take you as a second. Motion made by Joe, seconded by. Motion made by Joe, seconded by John. Joe?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Hillary?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Thank you. Oh, no, now on to the changes. We're going to add in that, that staff's going to review an updated stormwater review by the town engineer, and then the rest of the conditions stand as is.
Would that, so would that be a fourth condition, or?
That can be a fourth condition, yes. That the town engineer review stormwaters that pertains to the change in plan. Okay, so we'd entertain a motion on that, please.
Motion to approve with condition four verifying water storage capacity.
Second.
Motion made by Joe, seconded by John. Joe?
Sorry.
John?
Aye.
Hillary?
Aye.
Nat?
Yeah.
And I'm an aye as well. Come on, guys, this is a short meeting.
Thank you very much.
I'll be recusing from this next one, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Nat.
This is AR subdivision, so.
Yep, just four of us, okay. Great, this is Ellen B. Ryder, 16 Bayberry Lane, Jeff Blackwell, a rare face in this room.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Jeff Blackwell and Arthur Reed for Ellen Ryder, the property owner. This definitive subdivision plan is the first step in the rear lot subdivision process where we submitted a plan and requested waivers for a two-lot subdivision. Of course, the ultimate goal is for a two-lot subdivision with a special permit under the rear lot zoning subdivision allowance. So we're showing a, similar to a rear lot subdivision, there was a AR precursor that was approved across the street from Mr. Norris some years ago, we're showing a 20-foot right-of-way, which his main purpose is to provide zoning frontage for a two-lot subdivision. Of course, the roadway will never be constructed because the, this is a proof step in the rear lot subdivision special permit process. Excuse me, so dimensionally, these two lots can be created in conformance of zoning with a 20-foot right-of-way, which of course requires a waiver from your standard template of a 40-foot right-of-way. But again, ultimately, the two lots that will be created in the future will share a driveway, but there will be no need for what is basically a rural road, gravel road construction. It'll be a shared driveway that'll split off between Mrs. Ryder's dwelling and a new dwelling, the rear lot that will be created. So we're complying with the standard requirements to demonstrate a proof subdivision. We could do a conventional subdivision of this nature, so therefore we're allowed to take the next step in the special permit process to then skip construction of the road and do a shared driveway. If you have any questions, I'll try to address those.
Board members? Nothing further to add from what Jeff said, I'm just here in case there's any further question on the point. Perfect, you're the deck candy, they call it. You're the deck candy, the guy to look at. Board members, any questions? It seems like a pretty straightforward rear lot subdivision or proof plan that we've seen multiple times. Concerns or questions? No? Okay. Emily, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Emily Molden for the Nantucket Land and Water Council. I did have a question about this one, and also for consistency's sake, as the board knows, we have had some concerns about the rear lot subdivision special permits that are based off of plans that are not conforming on their own to the rules and regs, and I was just wondering in this particular instance, because one of the lots is certainly oversized, if a proof plan could be drawn up with a conforming roadway on this lot that would still allow for the creation of two lots. I don't know if there is maybe an issue with regularity and that's why that's not being done, but since it's not being constructed anyway, I'm just curious if it could be on this lot, since one of them is so oversized.
Thank you. Mr. Blackwell, would you like to address that? If you could, please.
That's a good question. I may have had a hangover from the subdivision that we submitted across the street where we used the 20-foot right-of-way and obtained the waiver for that. The roadway in this location at 40 feet would make Ellen Ryder's eventual lot. It may create a non-conformity with the zoning setback to her existing structure. I didn't entertain the exercise of creating a 40-foot way, knowing that in the past, the board has granted waivers from the 40-foot right-of-way requirement in countless subdivisions that have been approved here in Nantucket, so it's a good question. I didn't, I didn't go through that exercise to avoid the one of dozen waivers that we've requested, so. Good question.
That's fair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One thing I would throw out, and I know that this is not actually the request for the rear lot. Just as a suggestion, I wonder if it could be helpful to, rather than continuing to comment and question these sort of on a case-by-case basis, I would maybe ask the board to consider putting the rear lot subdivision bylaw provisions maybe as a separate agenda item to discuss at some future point in time. I know that our council's interpretation of them has been somewhat different from town council's interpretation of them, and it just could be an interesting discussion to have that maybe would lead to some clarification to propose for the bylaw, or just sort of a better understanding of what the language says, what the board's understanding and interpretation and intention is with them. So I would just throw that out there as well. That doesn't take away from this discussion, but I just wanted to suggest that because this has come up a number of times.
I welcome that, I think, I think before we go board-wide, though, that maybe a discussion with staff and myself and then.
Certainly.
And then move on from there.
Very happy to do that.
But I'm not opposed to that at all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ryder, sir.
Good evening, good evening to the board. Bob Lapine, I'm on 13 Bayberry. I believe that's the cul-de-sac right there, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, I see two lots. Where's the third lot?
In this plan, the third lot would be the road. In the proof plan, the third, that third lot, correct, is considered the road.
It's lot, it's called Lot A.
The road is a lot?
No, this new one.
Right there is a lot. Yes, sir.
That little strip, they're going to build a house on that?
No, sir. It's, 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 the road is considered a lot in an A&R plan, A.I. plan.
Are they going to hook to this town sewer? Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and are they going to enter in the cul-de-sac? Well, there's a shared driveway requirement, and there's currently a driveway for Mrs. Ryder's house, so that driveway is in the cul-de-sac, the body of the cul-de-sac there. So they're going to use that driveway for their entrance to the lot.
Yeah, so I think that the misunderstanding is, is this plan is put forward to prove that they can subdivide it into two lots.
Okay.
And when that's decided, we'll approve that plan, and they'll come back the following meeting and switch it to what they call a rear lot, where we'll remove the roadway lot, the A lot that you see will go away, and there'll just be a shared existing driveway to serve the two lots.
Okay, I thank you.
Does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Good evening, Joe.
Good to see you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in the public? Okay, I would entertain a motion.
We have Stephen Morris hand up online.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Welcome, Stephen.
Great, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Billy, and I apologize if the connection's not great, I've been relegated to my garage so my kids can watch Paw Patrol.
We can hear you loud and clear.
I hope the signal's coming through well. All right, great, well, I'm coming to you live from 28 Rugged Road, which used to be a portion of 18 Bayberry Lane, and I am the immediate abutter to Ellen Ryder, and I just want to voice my support for Ellen's plan, and I hope that it receives your positive endorsement here tonight.
Great, thank you, Stephen. Okay, anyone else in the public? Entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion made by John, seconded by Joe. John?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Hillary?
Can I make a comment? Or we went right to voting and I didn't get my comment in?
This is to close the public hearing.
Oh, to close the public hearing, yeah.
So yeah, so you'll have plenty of opportunity. Okay, and I'm an aye as well. Hillary?
Oh, yeah, so I wanted to voice support for Emily's suggestion. I think we have, as you, Mr. Chair, said, this looks like something we've improved a lot, and I think, you know, you don't want to change things in midstream without saying, okay, well, we've done this, there's varying interpretations of the bylaw, we might want to do something differently, I think we should give everyone the benefit of our full explanation of that. So I, I support this, but I do want to learn more about if the policy is really benefiting the, you know, honoring the Subdivision Control Act as it was created going forward. So I'd like to have that conversation at some point in the future.
I think we're headed in that direction.
Thank you.
Yes. Yeah, anyone else on the board? Questions, comments, concerns? Can I entertain a motion then?
I'd like a motion to approve the application with findings and conditions laid out by staff.
Second.
All right, motion made by John, seconded by Joe. John?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Hillary?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, if that's unanimous.
And Nat's recused.
And Nat's recused. So, thank you, gentlemen. Okay, on to thank you, Aileen Nominee Trust, Scott O'Connor, Ray Poole, trustees, Three and Three B, Wires Way.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Welcome.
You can get this to really pick up my voice here, I think now I've got it. We were before you recently on this as a preliminary plan, and this matter has been before the planning board previously, as you know, in connection with an A&R plan that was endorsed in 2018 to create the exact same two lots that we're showing on this plan. And at that time, there was the assumption that Wires Lane was either a public way or a private way that was the butter's way, that all butters would have rights in, and under a basis of the planning board, obviously, considering the construction of Wires Lane as it was at that time, was sufficient to support the two lots, the plan was endorsed A&R, obviously, that would be the basis for it's having to be endorsed at that time. It then developed that there was litigation in land court over the ownership of the road, over the land in the road, or whether it was a road, and it was, the land bank claimed ownership of that land, and as a result of the litigation in land court, it was determined that my clients, their entity, Salem Els LLC, the applicant here, in fact, owned the land in the road, and the settlement was reached with the land court, with the land bank in the land court, and that was the result of it. Land bank was granted an easement for their property, and there were certain provisions placed upon us, no more than two lots could be created from the property, which is what we're showing here anyway. So as a result of that, that raised the issue that since we own the land in the road, and there was then a plan that was shown, that was endorsed, showing the land in the road as being lots owned by our client, in conformity with that decision, questions then arose as to whether there were, whether the lots, these lots, as they're shown on this plan, had frontage. And in order to eliminate that concern, we've brought this plan before the board in order to have the roadway put back to its, the way that people understood it to be as being a roadway, but once again, only for the purpose of serving the proposed subdivision that started this whole thing, and that you endorsed back in 2018. Now, I've been over the staff report, but. That's been, that's been prepared on this, and almost all the conditions that are proposed in there would be perfectly reasonable and acceptable to us. We do have a question about whether there is need for there to be engineering review on this. The road, we're not proposing to do anything to the road other than, you know, it's now dirt, put stabilized gravel on it. It's, that's about, about all that is needed in order to make it perfectly suitable for the intended purpose. It's been before the Conservation Commission in the past, and there's an outstanding order of conditions with the CONCOM, which, in which the drainage, as it would affect the road, was addressed at that point, there being a swale along the northerly side of the road. And in any event, we would question, Art Disparo, I believe is online, and be able to address some of that as well, as to whether there's really the need to get to the point of doing a, any, any study as to the drainage or other engineering aspects of what we're doing, since, once again, it's already been looked at by the CONCOM. But other than that, the other conditions, that the lots be accessed by the roadway lot only, that the ACT PAC, or we possess stabilized gravel, that the APN be constructed at the entrance of New Lane, obviously subdivision documents we can generate easily, and those are appropriate, the $1,000 per lot, the homeowners association, not sure what the $2,500 monetary contribution, perhaps that could be discussed, the per dwelling unit. Obviously, the definitive plan be presented within six months. Obviously, the definitive plan be presented within six months. We can do a lot better than that. Lots not further subdivided. I don't believe they can be anyway, and we have an agreement with the land bank that limits us to two lots. They comply with, that the lots comply with all other dimensional requirements of the zoning bylaw, we agree to that. Roadway lot, they convey to the Homeowners Association prior to the release of the final lot. We would probably convey it prior to the release of the first lot or at the time of the release of the first lot. And, you know, all that's fine. And that's the only question, you know, the engineering drainage issue that we would question the need for.
Great. Thank you. Yes, sir.
To clarify, the $2,500 per dwelling unit was area pedestrian
Infrastructure.
Yeah, roadway pedestrian improvements.
Yeah. Great. Board members, questions, comments, concerns?
I'm kind of gonna push back a little bit to Arthur. I think if the CONCOM missed, you know, the review or making sure that roadway is fine, I feel like we should just have a double check on this. You know, we just talked about missing a little fire pit. So I just feel like we should be making sure that this is properly done and maintained. And so after construction, everything's put back together, everything's safe and stuff like that, and not having any impact, I think, would be wise. I think it's just a small, little ask. So that's my feeling.
To back up, Joe, I think that, you know, on a lot of the projects, you're right, we have waived that. But I think that this is adjacent to multiple wetlands, which I think is a great concern. This area hasn't had its potential build-out occur yet, so we're gonna add a lot of non-permeable surface to this area. At some point, the lot next door will be developed. I have concerns about that, and I know it's not our purview, but that lot next, you must, has to get the frontage from that road. So I question how you guys can have the exclusive right to it. So I just, a concern that we don't really have control over, but I'm just saying it to get it on the record. But I do have a hard time waiving the engineer report, mostly just because of the build-out that's gonna occur here and its proximity to a large wetland area. So that's my position on that. Any other board members?
This is a sensitive area for reasons our chair outlined, but also it's a, it's an important view where you come around and you see, you know, the land bank land and everything. And I'm concerned about this more and more earth moving going on on lots so that the structure already has, you know, four, five, six feet before they even build the structure. And I know why people want to do it. They're building a basement, and they want a better view. But it's really, I think, the antithesis of how Nantucket should be developed. You know, we should be building with structures responding to the land, not moving the land to make, I'm not saying you're doing any of that. I'm asking a question, really, of Leslie, as a new board member. We have the topo for this area. It's not shown on the plan, but can we include a condition that the topo can't be changed? Or, you know, something related to the topo?
That's CONCOM. CONCOM has that restriction, and I think they're on a slab-on-grade.
Leslie, can you, do you have any comment about that?
Well, in the subdivision rules and regs, you can require that they show the topography, and you could hold them to the existing grades as part of the subdivision approval. But it would have to be as part of the subdivision approval. It wouldn't be something that we could necessarily enforce on a building permit by building permit basis.
I think we should start, well, I'd like to hear what everybody else thinks, but I think we should start paying attention where I understand, Joe, that we do have limits of what we can do and other boards do. But when someone's asking for an approval required subdivision, if we can see the topo, if we can understand how, you know, how to, how to limit those grade changes that are seeming to be more and more in demand and more able for people who have large earth-moving equipment on island to deliver. I think that's why we're seeing a lot more of it.
Yeah, I have the benefit of watching this from the CONCOM days, so I kind of know what they're gonna do and have approved that when I sat on that board. So, yeah, I know there is definitely a plan that shows topography, so. But that is memorialized in the final inspection of the CONCOM, so they would not allow a variety of grades. So that's why I kind of know that they have that written in there. But maybe we can have their CONCOM approval attached to this file as well. Maybe that's something that would help.
What is, has it gone to the CONCOM?
Yeah, it approved it.
They approved it.
And then they went to court.
Oh, I see. So that predated the court case. Well, if we're looking at having this come back, I'd like to see the topo lines added to the map. And just start to
Chairman of the HDC, too.
Yeah. Well, I, yeah. I mean, the HDC, if they move, if the, if the lot is, if the grade is changed before it goes to the HDC, there's not a lot that HDC will do, can't do.
Well, if you do any change to the HDC, that's a violation as well. So that's where it's like evidence being watched from multiple boards, which is
The poll points out to me, by the way, that we have building permits on this at the present time.
Yeah. So I think, I think that this is an important subject, and I think that we should probably circle back with staff and explore it. I don't think, I don't think now's the time to say all of a sudden we're applying it, but I think that it's important, and I think we can, we can sit down with staff and have a discussion how we integrate that into what we do.
And I'll just add to that, that we do have a somewhat stalled but ongoing subdivision rules and regulations update. So if that's language that you all want to have strengthened, that would be a really good time to talk about that.
So they're already building permits in place for this, before we've approved the subdivision?
Yep.
It's been a long time. A long, a long road.
I know, but
Yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Art Gasparo has had his hand raised for a little while.
Arthur?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I might be able to add a little background information on this, where we do have two orders of conditions for each of these lots. Those were subsequent filings to when Mr. Topham was on the board, so those are more recent, that have been approved. This is not within a flood zone, so grade changes are not prohibited by the Conservation Commission. The grade changing is, the grade changes that are proposed are on the lots. The road itself, of which I think we're before the planning board, for, we're not proposing to change the grades of the road going into the property. It's at the up, on the property itself. So I don't, I'm not quite sure why that is at issue here. The, the road, the sort of purpose of, as Mr. Reed described, is that there's really no change to the driveway that exists. And that's why we haven't, it's just gonna serve the lots as if it was gonna be done under the A&R, and we're not, we're not proposing to come in and build a new road within, within that layout. We're happy to make, you know, add some gravel to stabilize the two strips that, you know, come in along that driveway. There's a grass strip down the middle. There would be a driveway at the very end that goes up onto the lots. But again, I don't think that's really part of the planning board AR approval process. It's really, I think, limited to the road and, and that gravel driveway going up. There's restoration areas, again, that's all, that all has been reviewed and orders of conditions issued, I'd say, within the last year on both of those lots. So the grade change that we're discussing, I don't think really relates to, to the road itself. So I hope that helps.
Thank you, Art. Helpful, Hillary?
Mr. Chair, so what, what are, are we gonna be asked to approve this right now? Or are we gonna see it again because you want to see the stormwater report?
I mean, I think that, that staff can handle the stormwater report.
Oh, 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 see.
If, if, if it's deemed that it needs drainage in the road, then the staff can, can deal with that with the applicant.
Okay.
So the intention is, and, and again, I'm not trying to push this through on you, but the intention, I think, is to approve it tonight.
Yeah. So I think in this situation, this has gone on for a very long time. I mean, I remember when this first came up, and it went to court, and it's come back.
Yeah.
You know, I would like to see topo, and I'd like to see the grade changes. I don't know what they are, but I'm also, I'm also willing to make that a conversation going forward in future applications, thinking about our role when we do have an approval required subdivision, to think about how these lots are, you know, how the landscape is being manipulated in ways that really aren't beneficial to Nantucket as a whole.
I support that 100%. I just, I think I have a hard time applying that to this application.
I understand.
With the history of the application, where they're at, I feel that, that that's, it's almost a cheap shot.
I understand.
Yeah. So, again, I appreciate your point, and I think that, you know, I will address it with staff. You and I can sit down with staff and talk it through with them. Is there a more appropriate venue for it?
That'd be great.
All right. Great. Hello?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Emily Mulvaney for the Nantucket Land and Water Council. Just sort of one quick comment to add to the discussion. I do think that it's all connected, all of the comments, and I would support some of the board members' requests for some stormwater review for the roadway here. And I think that it is important that that is done in consideration of the grade changes that have already been permitted on lots A and B, because those will obviously have an implication on stormwater in the area. So I just wanted to support your request for that. Thank you.
Thank you. So anyone else in the public? Nobody online, Billy?
No.
Would I entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Falling apart here.
Motion made by John, seconded by Joe. John?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Hillary?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. As to the merits, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, sorry.
Nothing to add?
I, I think that what we need to add here is the, is the, is the Ed Pesci review on the, on the stormwater drainage in the road. And that can be addressed by staff with the applicant.
We'll facilitate that.
Yeah.
So a motion to approve the application with findings and conditions recommended by staff, adding a stormwater review by Mr. Pesci.
By Mr. Pesci, yes.
Second.
Motion made by John, seconded by Joe. John?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Hillary?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Light at the end of the tunnel. All righty. Next planning board regular meeting is Monday, August 11th at 4:00 p.m. Same bat channel, same bat place. I would entertain a mo, oh.
Sorry, I just wanted to have one follow-up about the master plan progress. So we talked about these stages. Dylan outlined them, and that the vision, bless you, the vision comes between stages one and, or two and three. So where are, where are we with stages one and two? The inventory assessment and the key planning issues?
So Judy's team is working on the inventory assessments and working with various staff people as needed. They've received comments back. I know that you had asked for a revised timeline. There was a little bit of a delay in, the finance department was getting a final contract back to Judy. So she didn't want to put together a revised timeline until she had the contract. So that's been addressed at this point. So we'll be getting a new timeline, but it's on schedule.
Okay, so the key planning issues are still key, be key.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Hopefully helping the vision will help with that.
Yeah, we're getting there. That it?
That's it, thanks.
Great. Entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by John, seconded by Hillary. John?
Aye.
Hillary?
Aye.
You all right?
Yeah, I'm all right.
Okay, Joe?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
And Nat, it is so good to have you back in a meeting and back in the game, buddy.
Definitely.
I'll be ready. Next meeting, I'll be sitting down there somewhere.